Order the city council meeting for March first, 2021. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the roll.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Vaughn? One absent, six present.
We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We have this on our agenda for any resident who does not want to stay later in the meeting or address a particular issue. This could be for anything that you want to talk to us about. It could even be for something on the agenda. If you're here for the cannabis discussion, you may want to wait for the cannabis discussion. If you can't wait for that, you can come forward now and you could address the council now. Would anybody like to address the council at this time? Please just state your name.
My name is Robert Muckensnabel. I live in Darien. I realize that the city is at its infancy concerning the cannabis situation there in Seventy-Fifth Street. Our opposition is in its infancy as well. We, not only I myself, but several of my neighbors and people that I attend church with, as well as a school that's located in its vicinity, are in any possible allowance for this to be in our community. I wanted to start off by thanking you guys for serving our community and certainly do appreciate living in the city. I'm a recent transfer from Bowling Brook and sure to enjoy all the amenities and the nice service that you guys provide. Our children attend schools approximately 680 feet from the former Steak and Shake. So I do have a concern over its proximity to the school that's close. There's also an elementary school that you're aware of that's a little bit farther south, but still, still close. And I have a concern not only for my children, but for the rest of the community's children. And on top of that, I'm concerned about the clientele that would be visiting this. I'm concerned about the clientele as it relates to where I bank, which is right next door. And concerned about the decisions that this clientele is going to be making in my community as well. Not only am I in opposition to this particular location, but in the entire city of Darien. So I just, I realize it's at its infancy, but I firmly oppose any possibility that this would be in our community. And I desire that you don't court or invite this to have any effect upon the area that we take great pleasure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Jake, him please.
Brad, is it okay if I remove the mask?
You can take the mask.
I'm a resident of Darien and I'm opposed to the Steak and Shake becoming a cannabis dispensary. I have three children, two seventeen-year-olds and a seven-year-old. They attend school at Marquette Manor, so it's very close proximity. I'm also, for work, I'm involved in mental health and I'm very concerned about having that in our community, the clientele that would be in our community. Prior to moving to Darien, I lived in Downers Grove for fifteen years and I lived very close to Downers Grove North. And you might have remembered in the news, a couple of years ago, there was a driver that was high and ran through the crosswalk and there was a student star volleyball player there that was killed. She was doing everything right, waited for the right time to walk across. And so that's my concern with my children at Marquette Manor and all the other students there, that we would be inviting some type of risk like this in our community as well. So just want to say I'm very opposed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, everybody. How you doing? My name is Gary Mick. I'm not a resident of Darien. Love to be, but unfortunately the Darien end's right at two blocks, I mean, a couple of houses away from me. I'm on the Downers Grove side. I'm on the outside of Seventy-Fifth Street, which is Downers Grove on Florence Avenue there. And thank you for guys being here. I didn't understand the complexity of what you guys do. I'm opposed to this also. I'm about a thousand feet away from it. I don't go to Marquette Manor, but they're, I know those, they're close to us. My experiences, I've been in Oregon. I've seen these places that have been there for years and the clientele sleep on the streets. They're waiting for it to open in the morning. Maybe that wouldn't happen here, but you want to take that risk. You want to have, you guys are finally getting a beautiful bike path right on Seventy-Fifth Street that goes right past that place. You want to have all those bicyclists see you in a cannabis store? Is that the impression you want to leave of Darien? You know, I know you guys want to get the revenue. It's important to the city. You got a frontage road over there on the other side of Fifty-Five where the, there's industrial parks and all sorts of stuff where you guys have land. Put it over there. Put it out of the way. But putting it where it's a congested area, you got daycare across the street, that's less than a thousand feet, that's probably four hundred fifty feet away. And of course, you got dirt, school. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I just want to say, and I appreciate people coming forward to share their feelings. What we're voting on tonight, not to establish marijuana store at Steak and Shake. In fact, we've had no one come to us and say they'd like to put a marijuana store as Steak and Shake. At the request of one of our aldermen, we're considering whether or not we want to change the zoning for this, for this site. And again, that would be for permitted use, which means in the future, if a establishment wanted to come in, it would be that much easier for them. But again, with its current zoning, if someone was interested in this site, we would be going through the process anyway if they requested a change in the zoning. I just want to clarify that because a lot of the emails I received were from people who thought, we're taking a vote tonight to establish a marijuana establishment on Seventy-Fifth Street as Steak and Shake. And that is really not what we're doing. We're just talking about a process of looking at a zoning. And to be quite honest, that process is very stringent and will, would include opportunities for the public to come in and state what you're stating tonight. It would provide an opportunity for the council members and municipal services to discuss it, and then it would have to come back to the city council again. So there would be a lot of opportunities for the public to speak their mind before anything really took place. And even if we changed the zoning to a permitted use, that doesn't mean anybody's going to come to Darien and go into that site. I appreciate what you said tonight. I know it came from your heart and I just wanted you to know, just to clarify what we're really talking about tonight. So I appreciate your remark. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move down to the approval of the minutes for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And I have a motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, second by Alderman Kenny. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The minutes have been approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications? Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got an email from Jackie Price, who lives at seventy-seven thirty-one Lester Lane and her, basically her opposition to zoning for the marijuana dispensary.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few here. I have Tom McCall sent us an email, you know, opposition of a dispensary. Then I have Heather Conroy on Wilcox in favor of, of a dispensary. I received a communication from Bob Rosetko on Allison regarding no removal in the Park District. I think we all received a communication from Martin Gorski regarding audit. Also receiving a communication from Anthony Vicora and Darien Club regarding trees and the, and the medians. And my last one is sad to say, one of my, one of my residents, Stan Nemec, I received a phone call from his son this morning that Stan had passed away, you know, suddenly with a, with a, with a sickness, with a, with a, an illness. And I'm sorry to see, I'm sorry to see Stan go. He was a, he was a, he was a great guy. He fought, he fought me early on, you know, with, with stuff. And Brian, as you know, he wouldn't be afraid, he wouldn't be afraid to call you, call you out on stuff. So I'm really, I'm really going to miss Stan.
And he wasn't afraid to take it back.
Nope. Nope. Nope.
Alderman Belzak, do you have any communications?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Gustafson?
I did receive a couple of emails from homeowners on Wilton Road concerned about the marijuana store. I did also receive a couple of phone calls from, from people regarding the noise coming from a barking dog. And I got ahold of Brian on that and you'll be able to communicate back to me regarding the ordinance. And it's my understanding, and, and their people are going to be listening tonight so they know what to do, is they, they need to call nine-one-one. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And then, police chief, what, what does your team do then when they get a call for a barking dog?
They'll investigate the incident and there's, you know, try to resolve it, whatever that resolution looks like, whether it's a patient, getting the dog moved inside, getting the dog retrieved, whatever the case may be, try to resolve that.
Do, do the people calling?
Greg, can you come to the mic so people at home could hear you? Sorry.
Can they stay anonymous, the people that call into nine-one-one? They don't want to upset their neighbor, so they really don't want to know, their neighbors know that they called.
Yes, phone calls to nine-one-one can be anonymous.
Okay. So your officers aren't going to go there and say so-and-so called?
I would hope not.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Greg, though, just, people can FOIA those calls. I'm just curious, if somebody really wanted to, could they get a copy of that nine-one-one? They could FOIA the call, but we would redact any personal information. But if somebody recognizes the voice, they would, might know who it is? Um, you wouldn't FOIA us for the nine-one-one call. You would for the data entry on that. We would have that, but the actual physical voice recording, we would not have to, you would have to FOIA Ducomm, and I'm not sure what their requirements are for redaction. I would believe that there would be no redaction on voice.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to quickly comment. It seems I see residents that hesitate to call nine-one-one, and so it's one of the reasons I want to have more community events. I know the mayor's doing an event here come August, which I think is great, but it's one of the reasons I want more block parties and funding for those block parties. As you can see, we have residents that are worried to call nine-one-one, so.
Right.
Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, any of those events, and early on, I went to a number of them. I haven't been invited to for a long time, but never shied away from any of those meetings. I, I would do a lot of those meetings in a prior life. And like I said, when I first came here, had a number of meetings and they seemed to trail off, but I have no problem with going to any meeting you want to at any time, virtually.
Mary?
I was just going to say, I know in the last year, since we enacted our new communications plan, at least on one occasion, if not more, it was communicated in direct connect, like why and when and how you go about calling nine-one-one for what reasons. So I do think we have done some community outreach in trying to dispel the myth that, you know, there has to be like something super serious or life-threatening to call nine-one-one, that there are other reasons, nuisance reasons and other, when you're suspicious, like don't hesitate to call nine-one-one, you know, that you're, the community, our community police force is here to help us and comfort us and investigate.
Alderman Kenny?
And I, you know, my residents, if they're afraid to call nine-one-one, they tend to call me and I, and I have no problem taking the phone up and obviously.
Yeah.
If you and I have discussed.
That's probably what's going to happen with this, is that I'll be calling on behalf of the individuals because.
That's no problem.
I'll start walking my dog someplace else, so you're fine. All right. Mayor, just one last thing and I, and I apologize. I got a late communication this afternoon and I forgot to write it down here. I received a card from Anna and Anthony Leopoldo, and I believe Alderman Sullivan received one as well, thanking us for saving their pets.
Thank you, chief. Thanks.
With the chickens best, past fall, this past fall.
Mary?
And Alderman Kenny already introduced that. We got a lovely, my kids are a little older now, so I haven't had the opportunity to have one of these beauties in a long time, but I do want to thank Anthony and Anna Leopoldo for a really heartfelt thank you. I appreciate that very much. I did receive a phone call from resident Jolene Libidis. She has spoken at city council before. She is a professional therapist, mental health expert, speaking out about cannabis. She was very concerned and I, to explain the process to her, that this by no means is a vote one way or the other tonight. It's just more about the process and, you know, what procedural-wise, what would happen. So I did talk to her about that and shared the agenda.
Anyone else? I have, I have several communications. I received a very nice email from a George, I think it's Nassis, N-A-S-S-I-S. He writes, Mayor Marquez, I want to briefly give feedback with the work that the municipal services department has performed this winter season with snow removal and salting of our neighborhood's streets. My family lives on Richmond Avenue in Hinsbrook, and year after year, we continue to be thoroughly impressed with the dedication and performance that our city workers accomplish. For work, I travel on a daily basis through multiple of our neighborhood municipalities and see firsthand the exceptional difference that our crews make versus the other cities' snow removal effort. Please pass on our family's great appreciation and acknowledgement to our municipal services team members on a continued job well done. It would be remiss of me to not thank you personally for your unending marital leadership and selfless act on behalf of our community during these difficult times, and may you and our city staff be blessed with strength, health, and many more years of service to Darien. I think that's one of the nicest emails I think I've received in a long time. It's nice to know people acknowledge that. In addition to that, I received emails from the following, who are all in opposition to the Steak and Shake site. I'm probably going to murder this name, Mike Maniscalci, Jessica Glennon, Christina Odrasik, Jennifer Lechner, Catherine Glennon, and Ken Lechner. And again, each one of them, I responded to all of them. I wrote an email to them. I let them know what we were voting on tonight, so it was very clear that we were not voting to establish a marijuana site on the Steak and Shake site. That concludes my communications, and then it takes me to my mayor's report. And I'm very proud and happy to say that the city of Darien and the Darien Chamber of Commerce will be acknowledging the twentieth anniversary of the nine-eleven incident this September eleventh, is twenty years since this tragic event impacted our country. Darien Chamber of Commerce and the city have developed a theme called "Darien Remembers Nine-Eleven." And on Saturday, September eleventh, and Sunday, September twelfth, the city will be conducting a number of events in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. People will see us, we will be reading a resolution on September sixth, and we will be asking for the month of September to be considered "Darien Remembers Nine-Eleven Month" in the city of Darien. We will also show that by street banners, which will be, which will line Seventy-Fifth Street and which will line Cass Avenue. We will also engage in educational activities. We have contacted District Eighty-Six and all the feeder schools into District Eighty-Six as well as District Ninety-Nine, and we will have participation from all of our local schools. We'll engage students in poster contests, letters to first responders, a student, student doing individual research on nine-eleven and writing papers on what nine-eleven means to me or what nine-eleven means to our country. We will have a first responder parade on Saturday, September eleventh, and we not only will we ask our first responders to be part of that, we will ask first responders from neighboring communities to be part of that. We will have a luncheon at the Darien Community Park following the parade, at which point we will acknowledge the work of the many students who we hope participate in this project. We will have the Darien Dash on Sunday, a special Darien Dash that will begin at the Darien Swim and Recreation Club and which will end at the Darien Swim and Recreation Club. And we will have a concert at Carriage Greens featuring patriotic music, music tied to the theme of nine-eleven, and there will be other miscellaneous activities. So I'm very proud to announce that the city of Darien will be conducting that weekend, and we will commemorate and honor those people who died in the nine-eleven event. In addition to that, I wanted to give a brief update on the vaccination program. We have a lot of seniors who call and a lot of them want to know when they're going to get their vaccination, where they're going to get their vaccination. Every Monday morning, I engage in a one-hour conference with the DuPage County Health Department and their staff, as well as other mayors, not just me. And we get data on a week-to-week basis. We, we are currently in a position where DuPage County has fifty-three sites that are capable of administering fifty-two thousand shots per week. Now, you may ask, why aren't they doing that? They aren't doing that because they don't have the doses of vaccine to do that. Last week, DuPage County received four thousand five hundred doses. This week, DuPage County received eight thousand five hundred doses, and they're expecting fourteen thousand next week and sixteen thousand the week after. No mayor in this, in DuPage County can control this. We depend on the DuPage County Health Department to assist us. Now, the state of Illinois and the federal government have contracts with pharmacies, both chain pharmacies as well as independent pharmacies. So Walgreens and Jewel Esco are getting doses from the federal government and from the state of Illinois, because a lot of people are getting their vaccines there, but they're working very hard to get those, to get those appointments made. The city of Darien will do everything it can to make sure that people are receiving information that they need to make the critical decision about where they can go to get their vaccine. Just last Wednesday, Mr. Vanna received a phone call from Dave Fieldman with DuPage Mayor's and Managers, saying that District Ninety-Nine was going to inoculate their teachers on Sunday, February twenty-eighth, and that they would make an allotment of those, of that vaccine for Darien residents. Brian put out something in our direct connect. We got five hundred people in just a few hours. Unfortunately, we were only able to schedule twenty-six people. We were only allotted twenty-six. What happened yesterday is I received a phone call from Superintendent Bob Langman from District Eighty-One telling me they had extra doses, so I got on the phone and started calling more Darien residents, and we got those residents over there to get inoculated. So we will be doing things like that, but at the same time, I want residents to know, we will do everything we can to give you the information that we can give you, and our hope is with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine being approved by the FDA, that we're going to see more of the vaccine in DuPage County in the coming week. And right now, DuPage County is highlighting one B, which are people sixty-five years of age and older. And right now, we have quite a few people in that age group that have to get vaccinated. And I know, as strange as it sounds, DuPage County has the highest percentage of people vaccinated, both just one dose as well as two doses, in the whole collar county area. So DuPage County's doing well, because a lot of people who call me think DuPage County's not doing their job, but they are doing their job. That concludes my mayor's report tonight, and if anybody has any questions for me regarding that, they can give me a call here at City Hall. Takes us to our city clerk report. Joanne?
The consolidated general election held on April the sixth, one, early voting has begun. There are temporary as well as permanent voting locations for the various hours of operation. So I'm asking people, please go to DuPage County election website, the information, because the days vary, hours vary, and locations.
Thank you, Joanne. City administrative report, Mr. Vanna?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to add one comment. You read a very nice email about the snow plowing efforts, and just so everybody recognizes and realizes that there is a lot of planning, a lot of preparation, a lot that goes into that. The Public Works Department over years has looked for efficiencies and ways to approve the efficiencies and have, have really done a great job. But again, it's a lot, it is a lot of planning, coordination. You know, they're like, like any other business entity that provides a service, you know, will have employees that may get sick, will have vehicles that break down during a snowstorm like we did recently, and, and the, and the crews really nailed it and did a fantastic job. And that's obvious to residents, but all of us here see many of the projects that the crews do, Dan, and just again, if you could pass it on to them, very proud of the work they do and the quality of the job and really a great group.
Well, we appreciate that. As a matter of fact, let me make one real, real comment on the mic. Don't be trying to trick me.
Throw. And then again, we appreciate the comments, and again, it's, it's an endless job, especially when these guys are out there for twelve hours, for three, four, five days straight. It gets exhausting, and all of a sudden, it's Murphy's Law, and a water main break is going to follow after a, a snowstorm because of a cold spell. So just, this recent snow, snowstorm, the guys went home literally for three, four hours and had to come back for a water main break on Seventy-Fifth Street. Now, so we're very conscientious of the safety of the guys, safety of the motorists, safety of pedestrians, schoolchildren, and even the sidewalks. I mean, the guys made a valiant effort to get through the sidewalks, especially when DuPage County came back and used what they call a wing plow and pushed everything back. So our guys were basically muddling through four, five feet of snow with one piece of equipment, one special piece of equipment, then followed by another one. Also, we've had recently, residents just called me up last week and was willing to buy the guys pizzas, so I just haven't conveyed that back to our guys yet, but if any residents would like to do something like that for our public works, great. They love to eat, let me tell you. So, but anyway, thank you for those comments, Mr. Mayor, Brian, city council.
Dan, Dan, why don't you stay there, because the next item is the department had information and questions. Anybody have a question for Dan, since he's at the microphone?
Well, since I've noticed over the years, you get a freeze and then you get a thaw, and then that's when your water main breaks pop. How, how we've been doing the last, uh, week or so with water main break?
Actually, pretty good knock on.
Yeah, I know. I'll do it for you.
That's laminated, sorry, no. But, no, we've been pretty fortunate, you know, and what really happens is when a water temperature starts to fluctuate and within the cast iron pipes more than, more than the ductile iron, that temperature just changes ever so slightly, and all of a sudden, the pipe expands or tracks, and boom, all of a sudden, you have a break. See, I did a thirty-second technical review on that.
Anything else for Dan? How about for the chief? Anything for Chief Thomas?
Thank you.
We haven't seen the chief for a while, so good to see him.
Dan?
The, you can take the mask off.
I have a number of people that have asked me about the House Bill Thirty, Thirty-Six Fifty-Three, which is now law, was signed into law. It's actually not law yet. It'll become law on July first, and then there's some phase-in things. There's a lot of comments about why it was needed and. There's a lot of comments about why it was needed and comments about how it was implemented. I'm avoiding those whole conversations because it is, on July 1st, it'll be the law. So not to belabor those issues, but talk about the current situation. So many people have asked about it, so I'm going to be here to talk about the issue. A number of police chiefs had an opportunity to have a conversation with Senators Sims and Peters, the architects of the statute, so appreciate the opportunity to have that conversation last Thursday. There were some assurances from that conversation that most likely there will be a trailer bill, and some of the chiefs were given the requirement to put some stuff together to have a good conversation with the senators about future changes. The House bill was quite lengthy, 748 pages. However, a lot of that language, if you looked at it, it was sometimes we provide the council with ordinance changes, and there's the strikeouts and highlights of new language and editing of old language and those type of things. So and then current language. So even though it says 748 pages, it was still extensive, even though there was, like I said, a lot of edits and non-edits to the to the bill itself. Bring my glasses. So I'll talk about costs, even though I gave a little briefing at our budget hearing, I'll I'll hit that again just quickly so that everybody that's listening in has a good understanding of the act. Safety and security, which is most people have questions about, so I'll go into that a little with a little more detail, and then talk about, you know, some of the act and how it affects my ability or any other chief's ability to manage the police department. And other impacts, there's a lot of good in the act. There's also some stuff that's not so good or language needs to be clarified, and I think that that's where some of the stuff got off the rails and a lot of conversation about asking the governor to veto the bill, and then conversations about people that wanted the bill vetoed were against progressive legislative changes and reforms, and that I don't believe that that's true. I know I've had lots and lots and lots of conversation with fellow chiefs, and all the chiefs I've dealt with are all well, ready, willing, and able to make that change. They've already changed policies prior to, and since the Reform Act, there's a lot of stuff to get implemented before July 1st. And again, I was appreciative that the senators were willing to talk about and make some language changes when we get there, and I'll talk about those as we work through it. So just basically on costs, there's going to be a cost involved with the cameras, and I talked about that at the budget and using equitable sharing funds. In the conversation with the senators, there is a possibility, probability, that there will be money made available. So we're not obligated by statute until 1/1 of '25 to have body-worn cameras. So there might be a strategy to hold off and see how that legislation looks or the budget appropriation looks. I can believe now, I was told, there's about $1 million in that account, and I'm sure that those agencies that have to be implemented first are going to get priority to that those funds. I believe I was told that there's about $3 million that's going to be added to that fund for the next fiscal, state fiscal year. Again, that's prior to our requirement, so we'll have to see how that that plays out. There are some grants with different agencies to try to implement body-worn cameras, and we talked about deferring some of that cost to the Equitable Sharing Fund. There's requirements for training. There'll be a cost. I don't know what that cost is because I don't know how that training is going to be delivered. If the requirement is online delivery of training, that's a cost. If we have to send somebody away for that training, all 34 sworn, to that training, then that's a cost. If we can send one person to the training as a trained trainer and bring them back, that's a cost. So it's hard to say what that cost is, but it is a requirement. Mental health checks, we currently do that for all new employees, but now there's a requirement to, well, it's statutory requirement now to do it, and there's a statutory requirement to have in-service officers checked, mental health checked. So don't know exactly what that looks like, but it has to be done every three years. Current cost is about $485 apiece, so that looks like about a $5,000 plus addition to our budget. Again, it's a three-year process, so it's not an immediate impact. There's expanded reporting requirements. All good, I think, or I can't say all good, but most of them are pretty good. But that's a cost, and I think it's going to be minimal cost to it. There's a requirement not to be able to use military surplus equipment, and if you do, there's a process to doing that. There's a couple of different programs. They're called the 1033 program, or less so, Law Enforcement Support Office programs. We have not, as far as I know, I know since I've been here for five years, made use of that program, so it really is not an impact. So let's talk a little bit about the ability to serve and protect and issues that way. So legislation prohibits custodial arrest for Class B and C misdemeanors. I'm sure there's not very many people that understand what that means. It mandates that law enforcement issue a citation in lieu of custodial arrest upon proper identification for those accused of a Class B and Class C criminal misdemeanor offenses who pose no threat to the community or persons. That's a legal thing. It's not, you can find on page 326 if you're so inclined. So what does that mean in layman's terms? Let me give you an example of Class B misdemeanors or criminal trespass of land, disorderly conduct, obscene or harassing phone calls. And the application is if you call the police because of an unwanted person is peeking in your windows or standing in your yard and you do not want them there, you call the police. Nothing's different that way. The police will issue a citation, much like a traffic ticket, and the police cannot physically remove the person. So in the past, there was a custodial arrest, so if that person refused to leave, we would make a custodial arrest. Now you cannot do that. I think there's two worthy goals here, and to me, they're not in conflict with each other. It's not an either-or. I think that the goal of not wanting to incarcerate low-level offenders is honorable. I believe that the need to protect victims so they're not further victimized is also a noble goal, and like I said, I don't think that's an either-or proposition. I believe there's several solutions to that problem. You can have a carve-out for certain Class B violations and allow for custodial arrests. You could move some of those required Class B violations as Class A misdemeanors. You can allow for a custodial arrest, but an immediate release from the local lockup following booking procedures. And there's many other ways to reduce or eliminate the low-level incarceration of low-level offenders, yet protect victims in the process. So when I say that they're willing to talk, this exact scenario was given to Senators Sims and Peters, and again, I think they're willing to look at the act and make sure that victims are protected as well as low-level offenders are not unduly incarcerated. There's a whole long list of information about partnerships for deflecting substance abuse and disorder. Doesn't really change much, other than first responders, including the police, now have to be trained in those issues. Not a lot going on there. It's a good thing. Next is no arrest for obstructing justice without an underlying crime. Again, what the heck does that mean? A person shall not be subject to arrest for resisting or obstructing a peace officer unless there's an underlying offense for which the person was initially subject to arrest. You can find this on 375, page 375. Again, I'll give you an example. Many things the police do have nothing to do with a crime, and such thing is helping the fire department with a fire scene, assistance ambulances with physical or mental issues. In fact, I think if you look at all the calls for service, less than half have to deal with a criminal act. So let's say there's a call domestic, and one of the parties will not allow us to check on the safety of another person. Absent exigent circumstances, and again, I don't want to get into a whole legal discussion about warrantless searches and all those other things, but absent exigent circumstances, we would not be able to check on the welfare of the individual. Protecting a crime scene, we would not be able to prevent people from entering a crime scene, because if you enter a crime scene, it would be obstructing, and there's no underlying charge, so it'd be hard to protect that scene. That again, specific example was given to Senator Sims and Senator Peters. Senator Sims answered the question and said that that is not accurate, that you could make the arrest, but I don't, I don't believe that that his interpretation is the same as the letter of the law. Absent anything else, we have to go by the letter of law. There's no legislative intent, so the law is, is how it's read or written. Again, I think there needs to be some discussion and hopefully a change. I think maybe, because again, there's no legislative intent, and it's hard to describe or think what's in another person's mind. I'm guessing that even though it's written under the same statute, because the statute is obstructing or resisting arrest, that their intent, which I think is good, their intent was to have an underlying charge before you can charge resisting arrest. It just makes sense that I shouldn't be able to charge you with resisting when I don't have an underlying crime. That to me makes sense. It doesn't make sense to me that you can't arrest somebody for obstructing justice when there's not an underlying crime, because there's just so many things that we do that requires us to be able to enforce the law. Three calls, three phone calls mandates that an arrestee has the right to, three phone calls within three hours of being taken into custody, to communicate with an attorney, family members free of charge, allows the arrestee to access their own cellular phone for contact numbers, fully requires that the information is posted and assigned. Those make sense for a lot of reasons, but it also places, could place an officer in trouble, and it could affect a ongoing investigation. And I'll give you an example. It came from Aurora, it's mostly U.N., and we ran a number of raids and did different things, and even with the assistance of the FBI, ATF, and other tactical teams, we just could not run all those operations at the exact same time so that somebody that gets arrested is not calling and tipping off somebody else. Whatever that tip-off means, the person can flee, the person could prepare for the police upon entry, the person could eliminate evidence. So there are some valid reasons to not to implement this rule as stated. Again, there is obviously a need for a person to contact an attorney and contact family at those type of things at the appropriate time. I think a lot of people are under a misconception because they watch TV, and they want their one phone call. That has not been the law. The law previous, persons who are incarcerated shall have the right to communicate with an attorney of their choice, have a member and members of their family by making a reasonable number of phone calls. It doesn't list to one, and does in fact, doesn't even list, limit it to three. Says reasonable number of phone calls. And then in such communication shall be permitted within a reasonable amount of time after arrival at the first place of custody. So I think that, again, the intent is sound. I think that the application needs a little bit of tweaking. Fleeing felon restricts deadly force while making an arrest if an officer reasonably believes that the person cannot be apprehended later. Almost anyone can be apprehended later. Again, the Pratt shooting in Aurora, five people killed, five officers injured by gunfire, and if that person was eliminated within the building, but had that person fled, we there is a reasonable, we knew who he was, so there's a reasonableness that we would be able to apprehend him at a later date. So there's a number of schools, Aurora University, Freeman Elementary, missing another one, in that, oh, Holy Angels, right in that area, and we could not prevent that from occurring. So again, I think the original intent, because currently the law is fleeing forcible felon, there's 14 laws that are the forcible felons. I think there's better ways of saying it than the way it's currently written. Again, hopefully, there's some changes, and I believe there will be, so that that impact against the public doesn't occur. Chokeholds, I think that was made very popular recently regarding chokeholds. Chokeholds have been banned in Illinois since 2015, but this statute goes a little farther and I think a lot better. A choke is internal, and so for me to choke an offender, I would have to shove something down their throat. Strangulation is an external process, but regardless, the new statute talks about holds above the shoulder, so virtually everything is dealt with. So a little cleaner language, but again, I think it takes some tools out of the officer's toolbox. So instead of a choke in certain situations where you can't get to your firearm or other device, it's going to put that officer into a bad situation. But again, I think the intent was sound. Use a taser. You cannot shoot somebody in the back with a taser. Again, I think they should not have used taser. Tasers like saying Kleenex or Coke. Taser is a manufacturer, not a device, electrical impedance device is the proper term regardless. I think the intent is not to shoot somebody, or I know the intent is, because that's the way they wrote it, not to shoot somebody in the back. If you talk to Taser International, that is the preferred shooting. There's a lot of places, you know, shooting from the front that can go wrong, and shooting in the back gives you a larger target area and ability to take somebody into custody. I believe, again, this was missed in the legislation, because I think what they were trying to do was deal with riotous situations and indiscriminate use of less lethal force, but the way it was written is a little bit different than what I believe they intended. NO-NOx search warrants, still allows for NO-NOx search warrants, but there's a number of things that have has to happen before a NO-NOx search warrant is issued by a judge and that officers can implement a NO-NOx search warrant. The suspension of a person's license because of a non-payment of fines is being eliminated. Individuals are supposed to get their driver's license back, and the police cannot make a custodial arrest of somebody that is suspended on a, when their license is suspended for a no payment. So we'll have, again, just more policies to come up with how to deal with that issue. Should be fairly simple, but if you do make that stop, their license is still suspended for a period of time so they can for a period of time so they can, the Secretary of State can reissue all those licenses. So now what do you do? You can't let them back in the car. You're responsible for that car, so you're going to tow the car, incur all these costs. So hopefully by July first, some of those things will be dealt with and so we don't have that, that issue. Bail reform, that's another one that's, people have read and are worried about. It doesn't get implemented on July first, it's July, or January first, twenty twenty-three, I believe. Eliminates monetary bail. All people that are arrested are eligible for a pre-trial release before conviction. And there's a whole list of, there's not a list, it's a description containing the statute. It's the current statute code of criminal code, section one-ten-point-dash-six-point-one that talks about who are available for pre-trial release, which is kind of based on what the ultimate charge can result in. So what does that gobbledegook mean? So if you're arrested and it's a probationary, a probationable offense, then you most likely are not going to be subject to bail and you're going to be able to leave custody with, on your own recognizance. So there's a lot of issues there that needs to be dealt with as well, but there's time to work on those issues. Again, the statute is quite long. I'll talk about a few more and then if you have any specific questions, I'll do that as well. There's a portion of the law talks about certification and at the time, people have talked about licensure or certification, those type of things. On this particular portion of the bill, the Attorney General, Raoul, Quamie, Raoul? I can't, I think that's correct pronunciation. Regardless, he worked with a number of police chiefs on certification and decertification. So this law is pretty good to manage and make sure that we have the best officers that we can have there. So it updates the certification process. There's a decertification process. In the past, you can only decertify somebody if they were convicted of a felony. Now there's a law enforcement certification review panel, there's automatic and discretionary decertifications. So the officer can be certified for failing to intervene when an officer is, another officer is using excessive force or unnecessary force. An officer makes false statement in a police report, an officer misleads supervisors, perjury, evidence tampering, and a few other items. So again, it's pretty, pretty good. I think that there's some tweaks that need to happen there as well. You have to report in custody deaths. It's just smart process, but there's a process of doing that. There's the Attorney General Act allows the Attorney General to conduct investigations and pursue civil action against officers. You have to now maintain misconduct records for, permanently, where currently it's five years. Mental health screens we already talked about, training we've already talked about, so there's some good stuff regarding training and mandates. Currently, under current law, in order to keep certification, it's just myself and the deputy chief that have to do continuing ed requirements. So adding continuing ed requirements just adds to the spree decor of the agency. It's smart as long as we do it well and not check a box, but actually do the necessary training. There's a lot of changes to the discipline, which allows the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board to conduct investigations. I have no clue how they're going to do that with the amount of officers in the state. I believe there's only twelve employees and I think most of those are board members, so I'm not sure how that's going to get implemented, if at all. There's, creates Officer Professional Misconduct Database, which again is smart. Actually, I think that needs to be nationwide versus Illinois. We shouldn't allow a person from another community that got terminated for cause to come to Darien within the state of Illinois. Same way, we shouldn't allow somebody from, an officer from Indiana that got terminated for cause to come here. So I think that that database needs to be more, it would be a nationwide database versus Illinois, but it is a good step. Again, there's all kinds of changes made to the discipline process. I think that body worn cameras, again, we talked about it in terms of costs, but I think there's also issues that are, that we need to deal with within the statute pretty quickly. What happens is an officer violates policy, the camera always on, camera's always off, all the number of different rules, that officer can actually be arrested for a class-three felony, which is punishable by two years to five years in prison. And I think that that in itself is going, and some of the other changes are going to make it very difficult to recruit officers, very difficult to hire officers. The test before last, I think we had like about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five applications and we ended up with just under a hundred. This very last test that we're now, is going to expire in April and we're in the process of conducting a new eligibility list. I think we started off with less than half of what we started off with before and on the list, I think, was thirty-nine officers to choose from. So I think that there's some ramifications to some of the rule changes and different things like that that are going to be problematic with the statute. I think, again, the intent of keeping an officer from messing with the video and messing with evidence is sound, but I don't believe that they understood metadata and all these other things that are within the proprietary software of vendors that we use to purchase and the body worn cameras. And so some of those things I think are obsolete and don't really matter and we should be able to crack those again in the trailer bill, I hope. There's some smart stuff about duty to intervene, there's smart stuff about duty to render aid. Again, I think there's some conversations that we need to have about fixing some of those things. So I talked for quite a bit of time. Again, the statute is quite long. I think there's, overall, I think the intent was right. I think that the, some of the language is good. I think there, there needs to be a number of tweaks and changes to the language to make it very good and implementable and try to reduce some of the issues with costs and reduce some of the issues with retention and hiring and those type of things that are going to happen. Most of all, I think that we need to make those changes so that the public can be safe and feel safe. So, long-winded, but I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I can deal with those.
Any questions for the Chief, Mary?
Thank you so much, Chief. That, you know, it is, you know, you saw so much in the news and online and you really helped drill it down for us. How confident are you that these changes will happen in time before the bill becomes officially law in July?
The conversation with Senator Sims and Senator Peters was that they would start to entertain that, those, that information once we get it assembled. Jim Krueger and Mark Maton and some other chiefs are involved in getting that process done. We believe that we'll have that in front of them and hopefully have some process by May. That's, that's their current schedule, whether or not we can stick to that is up in the air.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got so much there. The only thing in my mind, when you're talking about the custodial citation where an officer can't arrest somebody basically for standing at somebody's, you know, property. How many times would a person get a custodial citation, you know, before anything can happen?
It's a good question because a lot of times in the statutes, there's an escalation. So retail theft, you commit it once and you commit it again within a certain amount of time, that could escalate the criminal charge. There's other places within different statutes that allow for escalation of charge. There's no escalation of charges, so you would be given that violation a number of times, that citation a number of times. Does not, that class B, the criminal trespass land does not turn to a class A or escalate to a felony. Correct.
So you could, it'd be very difficult to get that person off the property.
That's correct.
Quick questions. You mentioned decertification. If someone is decertified, is the city still responsible or taxpayer for the pension? If someone, say, for over ten years and they decertify, are we still liable, assuming ten more years, or how is the pension thing?
I believe in the original act, Senate bill, there was information in that bill about pension. I don't believe that when they converted from, I can't remember the numbers, Senate Bill two, three, whatever number it was, the House Bill thirty-six fifty-three, that that remained. So a person that is decertified, that has met certain obligations, I believe eight years or it could be ten years, could get their pension at age sixty with, that not taxed, that would be taxed at that time. I'm not familiar enough with the pension law to give you an exact answer to that.
I mean, if you, if the officer still works, no, he deserves it, you know, just curious on that item. And then amount, mental health checks, I read today, unfortunately, a Chicago police officer committed suicide. And you mentioned the mental health check initially, but I haven't heard anything in the bill about checking, say, for example, after a car accident, after a shooting or after five years that, you know, as these years wear on, that that affects you mentally. Is there any requirement for mental checks further after you start policing?
Yeah, I might have missed that, but it's every three years thereafter, so it does require. Some contracts require an ability by the chief to order people to EAP or some type of mental health checkup after a shooting, after they're involved in a fatal crash. There's also help that's available if they're, they saw those things happen. So there's some, a number of things that can help, but there is, it is mandated by the new statute to have mental health checks at least three years, every.
Anything else for the Chief? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mary. Good job. Thank you.
Takes us to our Treasurers Report. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting Council's approval of warrant number twenty-two-one-twenty-one in the amount of a hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and forty-three cents from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended February eleventh in the amount of three hundred five thousand, two hundred six dollars and seventy-four cents for a total to be approved of four hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions for the Treasurer? If none, the roll.
Aye.
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 The warrant's been approved. Takes us to Standing Committee Report. Do any of the Aldermen have Standing Committee Report? Alderwoman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee will be meeting this Thursday, March fourth, at seven PM in Council Chambers. And I'm pleased to announce that the Admin Finance Committee conducted the budget workshops. Two sessions were held and the budget was completely reviewed in those two sessions, so the future meetings that were scheduled will not be taking place. The budget will be presented at a public hearing at City Council on Monday, April fifth, and I'm pleased that we proceeded through all the discussions in a timely manner.
Thank you for your leadership on that too, Mary.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Police Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, March fifteenth, six PM across the park line in the police train room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Yes, and that Municipal Services Committee meeting is currently scheduled for March twenty-third, six AM, Council chamber.
Thank you, Alderman Belzak. That takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. Do anybody, anybody in the audience have any comments they'd like to make on an agenda item? Please come forward and.
Thank you. I am Jason Heisinger. I was a longtime former resident of Downers Grove, lives right down the street of Seventy-Fifth, right past Marquette, the funeral home. Moved in the last few years over to Lyell, but my mom still lives in that same area and we still attend the church in Marquette, so I have vested interest. As you may have guessed, the last agenda item, which is the revision proposal for the adding it to the listed permitted areas, I know mentioned, you mentioned before that it seems to be just a process question, almost a procedure of triviality, but if that were the case, I mean, why would it even be agenda item? I mean, kind of given from Gustafson's statement, why he wants it on there, get ahead of Napier Bell Westmoff, potential hefty tax revenue that might come from it. I mean, ultimately, you guys are looking potentially streamline the process, make it a bit easier, a bit more appealing, and subsequently hire like someone good in there as a cannabis retailer, recreational use marijuana. So I wouldn't say it's necessarily, it's just a simple process question. Ultimately, the goal is to make it a bit easier, increase likelihood of someone being there. Everyone's already stated multiple reasons why they're opposed to it. I hold the same views, I'm not going to rehash all those. Everyone knows the plethora of negative health effects on someone that uses marijuana recreationally as well as the social consequences, so I won't reiterate those, but I would like to point out that it is a bit more than just a process question. It is the first step towards making it a bit easier, streamlined and appealing. I'm not going to go so far as to say this is advertising for it, for potential recreational use marijuana dispensaries, but it does draw attention to it and bring highlight attention to getting news articles, et cetera, that people would look at and say, ah, there's a place that we may want to go. So just like point that out and also say that I'm opposed as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, that takes us to old business, there being none. Go to our consent agenda. We have a number of items that shall read. Item A, consideration of motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance number O twenty-eight dash twelve in the amount of three hundred six thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by O dash eighteen, dash, excuse me, dash eleven, dash eighteen in the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement between Karen Byrne and the City of Darien for code enforcement services. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B Burke Engineering for the professional design services related to the construction layout services for the geometrical reconfiguration of Sixty-seventh Street adjacent to the western leg of Clarton Hills Road in an amount not exceeding five thousand dollars. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a contingency in the amount of two thousand dollars with Christopher B Burke Engineering for any additional engineering or construction layout services for the geometrical reconfiguration of Sixty-seventh Street adjacent to the western leg of Clarton Hills Road. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax fund. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for the maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code authorizing the expenditure of Rebuild Illinois Bonds Program Fund. Item eight, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution allowing the City of Darien to perform maintenance and emergency work on city-owned infrastructure on state of Illinois highway system for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal for analytical soil testing fees from clean. for analytical soil testing fees from Clean Soils Consulting at the proposed unit price prices waste for a period of May first, twenty twenty one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for the purchase, removal and installation of thirty three streetlights by Rags Electric within the Woodland subdivision at a cost not to exceed seventy one thousand, two hundred dollars. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to extend, uh, city clerk to extend the roadside ditch maintenance contract unit prices between the city of Darien and Scoprio Construction Corporation that really, as it relates to the sixty seventh street geometrical roadway reconfiguration, sixty seventh street and Clarton Hills Road for the removal and replacement of storm sewer pipe structures and grading in an amount not to exceed four hundred dollars, forty thousand dollars, excuse me. Uh, motion to approve. Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Shower, and the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
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 And one A.
The consent agenda has been approved. It takes us to new business. We have one item. Item A, consideration of a motion to recommend zoning ordinance revision to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and commission review regarding the city's zoning regulations pertaining to cannabis business establishments. Ordinance revision pertains to adding an additional property address uh, twenty nineteen seventy fifth street, former Steak and Shake building to the list of permitted locations for a cannabis dispensing organization. Motion to approve. Alderman Gustafson, seconded by Alderman Clista.
I was going to move to table this the next meeting. I'm requesting a formal vote. Do I have a second? Remove it from the agenda. Correct. Motion, or second? By me, correct.
Now, discussion?
Since I made the motion, I'll discuss. We're missing an alderman currently. And a decision to not have it or not to move forward from a financial standpoint is, you know, estimated roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, as the treasurer has mentioned, we have pension obligations to do in the next year or two that we are forced to more than likely raise taxes to cover those pension requirements. And this is an opportunity to bring revenue, uh, to have an opportunity for the planning and zoning to review this. So as the mayor mentioned, this isn't to, uh, have cannabis in Darien, it's to move it forward to review, to discuss, to have planning, zoning and more input from the community. And since we have an alderman missing, I think it's just only fair that, uh, you know, we look at postponing it on the table.
Anything else?
I totally, I totally agree. I think it, it, it's important that we have a, a full, full group of aldermen here for the, this full discussion and vote.
Well, there has been plenty of votes. My time comes. We didn't have full amount of people here where people were traveling for business or vacation. This evening, um, Alderman Belzak is on, is on audio. I feel that if we table issues to make our point, get our points across to pass legislation that, you know, favors one party or another and take a motion to table something just because somebody's not here that day. I think that's an irresponsibility and I think we're not, we're not representing our citizens and our residents, our taxpayers by, by, by doing that thing. It's, you know, Alderman Gustafson wanted this on the docket tonight. I say, I can say we should continue on with it and I don't believe we should table this.
Alderman Sullivan?
Um, additionally, people have taken time out of their lives. Residents have come out tonight because it was on the agenda, it was published and, um, we received communications for people who could not come um, in person, and I think, um, it would be disrespectful to them, um, since they've come tonight not to, um, act on it since it is on the agenda. And I, I do have one more question as it pertains, um, this is like the second or third time I've heard the number nine hundred thousand dollars thrown out there. So where's that coming from?
If you take a look at some of the other communities, okay? They are actually booking a million, two, a million, three a year. Collinsville down the southern part of Illinois.
But we're not in southern Illinois.
They're doing a million, two. And they, and, 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 and they're a community the same size as Darien, it's twenty six thousand people.
But where's the other, I mean, like they're, maybe they're the only dispensary within fifteen miles.
Naperville is making a bundle right now. You know, Naperville originally voted against having marijuana. They just opened up their third store, their third store. So they know darn well how much revenue is coming in. And the mayor was interviewed the other day about how great the revenue is coming into his city.
And has there been anyone interviewed to talk about the fallout besides not making it about the money?
Naperville is always in the top five cities to live in, in the state of Illinois. So they, they know what they're doing, okay? And they do it extremely well. So we can't, they can't just say they're selling out and that this, the city's going to go downhill. That city is going to be booming.
And where are those dispensaries located in Naperville?
Different places.
Are any of them on a major thoroughfare within six hundred feet of a school or church?
They're within, I'm, I'm not sure the distance to schools, but the whole, the whole thing with the schools, the state of Illinois has no actual requirement for the distance to a school. That's only for the advertising side. Most, most other communities are two hundred and fifty feet. I went and did a search in about twelve different communities and all of them are either two hundred and fifty or a hundred feet from a school.
Okay, first of all, we're discussing whether or not we're going to, we're going to table this.
I understand.
I think we should keep the discussion.
I agree.
This is tabled tonight, not the merit.
I, I agree.
The following.
I was just answering questions.
Alderman Belzak?
Thank you for answering those.
If you have a question or comment, I'd like to hear, hear that at this time.
I would like to make a comment. Um, this is, it is very narrow. It's extremely narrow. We're asking whether, uh, we should table something to get, uh, the full seven here. And quite frankly, it's much to do about nothing because in the event it doesn't pass today and someone does come back and say, I have a license, I'm interested in that building, we're going to go through this again. There will be seven altogether at that point. We're not in a rush to do this, something Alderman Gustafson wanted to be creative about, get it on the agenda, so we can talk about it. I think it makes sense to have everyone do it. And, and like I said, regardless of what happens tonight, this will be the last time we're going to have this conversation.
Alderman Shower?
I, we can keep saying over and over, you, I've been in the same situation since day one. I do not want this. Leave it at that.
Alderman Clista?
No, as Alderman Kenny, I know he, you keep a very tight fist when it comes to money. I just want to, you know, point out that as Alderman Gustafson mentioned, nine hundred thousand dollars. We're going to be here in two years asking for taxpayer dollars to pay for pensions, so this will be forewarned, that's all.
All right, I'm going to call the question on the table.
Um, Clistic?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Howard?
Nope.
Sullivan?
No.
And, okay, I have three aldermen, fourth alderman against one app, so the mayor will make the deciding vote. Mayor Hayes?
Um, I don't vote, I vote negative at the table.
Now, then we'll get the first motion, which is the city as it was stated on the agenda. I already have, um, a first and a second. Gustafson?
This is, this, this send. We, yeah, wait. Let's have discussion then on the.
Yeah, yeah, we want this. No, that was just on the table.
On the table.
Yeah.
They didn't vote on the item. All right. So feelings regarding this, this item?
You know, it's, it's, the thing is with this, we're going to go to and have a public hearing, no matter what, wherever the process is going to be. All this is doing is getting a public hearing out there. And frankly, it may be a thing where at the public hearing, there's such an uproar against it that nobody in their right mind is going to come in and want to put a store there. Okay, that's how this could end up. We've got eight other locations that we've already identified for the city of Darien that we do want the marijuana store to be located. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're, we're also at a crossroads where frankly, I know some people disagree with this, but we need a new municipal services building, okay? Somehow that's got to be paid for. Somehow the police pension's got to be paid for. And we're going to have to find some way other than property taxes that we've got currently scheduled in two thousand twenty four to increase. And I'm on a fixed income and a lot of my people in my ward are. And I'll be darned if I want to increase taxes when I've got a great opportunity as Naperville is doing to increase revenue dramatically. I can increase the overall city's tax revenue by twenty percent with one store. This place is going to put more revenue in the pockets than Walmart does. Okay, realize that, what you're dealing with right here. Now, maybe this isn't the right location and that's fine. It's not me, for me to decide. It's going to be up to somebody who wants to come into the city of Darien and do that. I mean, supposedly this, the state of Illinois is going to be moving on the licenses now. So we're going to see that pretty quickly here of additional licenses being issued. There's going to be a, down the road, there's going to be a total of five hundred across the whole state. So you're going to have an onslaught of people wanting to come into communities like Darien and be able to open it up. And we just need to make sure, yeah, let's make sure it's in the right place. Okay, so it does the less harm to people, but we're getting that revenue into the coffers that we're, we're going to desperately need. I'll be darned if I'm ever going to vote for an increase. I will cut services down dramatically and, and cut the staff in half before I increase taxes at all in this city. We can't do that. The best way to do it is to increase revenue. So somehow, if it's, you know, if this isn't the way, you tell me where you're going to get revenue. Because there's not a lot of empty spaces in Darien. We've been very fortunate. There are some, but if you fill those, we still aren't going to get as much revenue as this one store could actually bring into the city. And that, that's all I, I, the only reason I'm behind this whole marijuana thing is that it's, it's legal in Illinois. The state's making a bundle on it. Cities like Naperville are making a huge bundle on it. I mean, let's, we're, you've got, you've got Westmont right next to us. They're out there marketing big time to try to get it, okay? So all of a sudden, we're going to have a store right next on the border of Darien. All the revenue going to Westmont and we're going to have the same issues, okay, that if it wasn't in our own community. So let's, let's think about, you know, that piece of it. We aren't, we aren't battling against if it should be legal or not. We're way past that. Now it's a matter of where should it go? And, and by, by doing this and getting this out there, we'll have the public hearing. Let's have the public hearing. If there's a big uproar against it, that's fine. I'm not mandating, I'm not out there recruiting to get places to come into the Steak and Shake. Okay, hopefully that's going to be filled with, filled by something very shortly because it's an ideal piece of property. So that, that's the only thing that I, that I'm after. I'm just wanted to get the process started. If we're going to have a public hearing anyway, let's just go through the process and get that out there so people know what, what we're, we're interested here in the city of Darien.
Mary?
Uh, thank you. Um, obviously I was not in favor of us opting in. I wanted us to opt out and say no to any cannabis dispensaries or businesses in Darien. Currently, um, we have eight locations that are permitted uses. I think there's many options out there. And, um, if a cannabis dispensary was to come to Darien, but I, I still would say no. Um, I don't think we need to add to that list. And, um, because this location still is not a no to cannabis, they would need to go through the zoning process anyways. And if that was to happen, I think the public would be more entitled to have a presentation by the potential business that's going in there, not by just a hypothetical business. So right now, if we were to move forward with changing the zoning to permitted use, the public would never have the opportunity to hear from the business that would be petitioning to take on that location. So, um, it doesn't close the door on that location. Nothing will unless we opt out of cannabis in Darien. But I don't think we need to fast track it to being a location without knowing what type of business would be going in there. I think the public is entitled to know, um, the, the background of the business, their, um, history. Um, have they operated other locations? And, um, this process, um, that you're proposing today would eliminate that opportunity to the public. So I defer to us waiting till a business is actually interested in that location, that particular location and would have to present, um, their business plan to the city of Darien, planning and zoning.
You know, I'll make a statement here and I probably won't win any fans with this, but a public hearing does permit the residents in your area to come forward.
Right.
And state their feelings.
Absolutely.
Tonight, we've heard from four or five people.
I had only two.
At public hearings, we've heard as, as many as thirty, forty people at a public hearing.
Right.
I would very much like to know what the people in your ward think about this. And I think as alderman, you would want to know. I also believe there are safeguards in, in here. I mean, planning and zoning could have a public hearing and there could be overwhelmingly against, uh, statements made by people that would lead them to a negative endorsement of this. It would go to municipal services, it would come to the city council and I, I don't think if people realize, but you're not voting on a marijuana store. You're voting on a process to go through, uh, a public hearing with planning and zoning, going through municipal services. And then you're voting to come to, then it comes to city council. And city council has to approve it. So, and at that point, city council could say no. So to Mary and to Ted and to, to Joe, who I know are very much against this and I support their views. The city council can say no to the zoning change after it goes through all those different committees. But why wouldn't Alderman Kenny, Alderman Shower, or Alderwoman Sullivan, or Alderman Belzak, or Clistic want to know what people think? As Mary says, if people are going to, uh, people are, are, are going to want to hear what a developer is going to say. In, in, in a year from now, we could have somebody come to us and say, I'd like the Steak and Shake building as a possible site. And we'd have to go through this process anyway with them. So why not go through the process now? Because you're going to hear from people and you're going to hear from the residents in that ward. Beyond that, we opted in over a year ago and we've had no one come to the city of Darien and ask to put a marijuana dispensary in Darien.
Well, there are some that are interested, they just don't have the license yet.
No, but they, they don't have a license.
So, I mean, but there is interest.
So I, I mean, my, my personal feeling is I always like to hear what residents have to say. And I was very happy to hear residents speak tonight with regard to how they feel and I empathize with them. But there are a lot of people who live in that subdivision behind that Steak and Shake. And I'd really like to know what they think. And I think as alderman for that ward, you need to hear that.
Right.
This may, this may die at the planning and zoning.
Absolutely.
Because I'm, and I'll be honest with you, Eric, if this goes to planning and zoning, you're going to hear an overwhelmingly negative endorsement of this.
And I think that needs to be heard. I think it's important that that is heard.
And, you know, I'm all for public hearings. My point, and I'll make it again, is by doing this now, we don't know what proposed business plan. It's like, it's like a ghost business right now. It's a possibility. It's, you know, it's, it's, I think, getting ahead of ourselves. We're doing this prematurely. Let's wait till a business comes to the city that has a license and is seeking out this location. So that said business organization that actually has license in hand can go through the process and present their plan.
I don't think it's going to make a difference.
Because not every cannabis dispensary is one and the same. They're all different. You've got Mon and Pops and you've got multi corporations and they operate differently. I mean, yes, they all have to follow some standards, but they're not one, you know, they're not apples to apples, is what I'm saying.
But you're not going to have people that would, would go ahead and be happy with one marijuana store and not happy with another.
There could be research done.
They're not going to be happy with any of them. So.
Eric, I don't, I'm not an expert on it and, and I know you're not either. I just think we should wait till we have an, a business that's got a license, that's requesting a zoning change. In the meantime, I hope another restaurant opens up. Something that I can, you know, bring my family to, that children can go to, that people in the neighborhood can walk to and, you know, that after church you can go to and grab a bite to eat because they ain't going to be hitting the dispensary.
For sale.
Oh, I, I, I see them doing some work inside. Maybe there's something going on.
Yeah, they're cleaning it out. They're in.
Yeah, they're cleaning it out, they're in.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, yeah, just quick, fine, thank you, mayor. Uh, first off, I just wanna give a lot of credit to Alderman Gustafson, I took a lot of, um, courage to bring this forward. And the reason I bring that up is I've been in council for quite a while, and one of the things I realized, when it comes to zoning, we're, we sort of take a laid-back, relaxed approach, and we lose out. As an example, we had an opportunity for a hotel, indoor baseball field, indoor volleyball field, where'd that go? We sat back, went to Willbrook, and we got a warehouse, and of course, Mary, you, you knew, 150 people showed up, and we still moved forward, right? So even if people showed up, you know, you can still move forward and stuff, so I'm sort of, you know, very impressed with Alderman Gustafson going forward, as Alderman Kenny mentioned, when C.R. England came in here, I should've came forward the next day and asked for rezoning. You said that, Alderman Kenny, don't deny that.
I absolutely did.
So he's coming forward right now, said, "I want a marijuana business, I want a cannabis business cuz I know it has revenue," right? So I give him a lot of credit for being proactive. Dude, when we say no, he'll just go to Willbrook, it'll go to Westmont, just watch, and then we'll be begging for more money, guaranteed. We've lost out so many times to good businesses, and we get up a warehouse. So I'm just saying, you need to be proactive or reactive. And being in council, we've always been reactive, and this is what we get, just saying.
And I want you to remember what you're voting on tonight does not speed through. Zoning, municipal services, and coming back to city council, you are not voting on establishing a marijuana business at the Steak and Shake. That is not tonight's vote. You're voting on a public hearing, you're voting on a public coming before, a public care, before planning and zoning, you're voting before the public coming to municipal services, and you're voting on the public being able to come to a city council meeting. And again, personally, I'd like to hear what those residents have to say myself. All right, I think I'll call the question.
This is on the original, um, agenda item, Gustafson?
Yes.
Clisstick?
Yes.
Belzak? Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
I have four ayes, two nays, and one absent.
Did you misunderstand Joe, or?
The idea was to, the idea was to, you know, vote yes, to bring it, to bring it, to go through, to go through the, the process.
Correct, to the public hearing.
And I, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm hearing it, that's what we, we, we want.
So we will proceed to, uh, the planning and zoning, which, which point we'll have a public hearing, advertisements will go out. I think there's one other thing that needs to be mentioned, Jordan, can you come forward? Jordan Yankee is our city, uh, planner. And I, I think it's critical to understand, could you explain today what you and I talked about in my office this afternoon with regard to filing of objections by the neighbors?
Right, so the ordinance for text amendments allow a certain number of protest, written protests, with different sort of avenues, whether or not it's adjoining parcels or parcels opposite to it, it, it goes in depth in the agenda memo, but just to point out that there is an avenue where if a certain written protest is filed during the process, it may require, uh, super majority of the council then, which means five, uh, votes to approve it. Uh, so let's say, um, let's say it gets through planning and zoning, uh, regardless of the recommendation, let's say it gets to council, and then the item is the text amendment to allow the location as a permitted use for a cannabis dispensing organization. One of the options is for 20% of the adjoining frontage owners, or the owners of the adjoining frontage, to submit a written protest, which would require it to be a five out of seven vote at least to uphold or approve that text amendment. Um, it goes in a little bit more depth in the agenda memo, it's hard without seeing it on the map potentially, but I think the mayor is mentioning that, hey, it, it doesn't necessarily require four out of the seven, depending on if a certain received protest, uh, that is notarized is, um, filed along the way.
And that would, that would include the bank on the east, homeowners on the south, and the Home Depot on the west.
Correct, yes, we identified as staff four parcels, uh, total, but only one of them would have to file a written protest that's accepted through our attorney and also the city to trigger that requirement, that five out of the seven city aldermen would have to, or older people would have to, uh, vote yes to pass the text amendment.
So again, however it goes through planning and zoning, comes out of planning and zoning, however it comes out of municipal services, if the notarized objection becomes part of the process, when it comes to council, to pass it, you need five votes to pass it.
Correct, yeah, if, if one of those is received and it's accepted by the city and the attorney's office.
I wanted, I wanted everybody to understand that, Mary.
So, Jer, oh, I'm sorry. Um, so what are the five properties or parcels?
There's four we identified, uh, the bank, I'm forgetting the name of the bank.
Okay, the bank.
Yeah.
First American, uh, the Home Depot property, which is a large property, Darien Town Center. And then there's two single-family homes, I think it's 2020 and 2016 Harper Road, I believe, off the top of my head.
And so the Market Manor Baptist Church is not one of them?
Correct.
And then those parcels would be, um, yeah, obviously a sign will be going up about a public hearing, but those parcels would be, would be receiving written notification?
Yes, it's within 250 feet of the property lines that votes.
Would you just explain to us, would they, um, you know, would that be explained in the letter they receive? That, um, an objection, if they have an objection, it should be filed, or is that just something they have to figure out on their own?
Uh, we, we could add it into it, otherwise throughout the process, it's gonna be added into the planning and zoning commission packet, municipal services, and ultimately city council, so they'll be informed of it, they're informed of it tonight if they're listening, but then also once they're notified.
I think that they should be notified about it in writing, cuz they might not be watching tonight or read other things. If they're gonna be, if a letter's gonna be sent, I think every bit of information that they would need to know should be in that letter.
One thing we'll have to check, I think the notice might be by ordinance, I think the verbiage might be, um, exact in, in the ordinance, so just something we'll have to check.
Yeah, yeah.
Come up, Dan.
Come up, come up. Well, that language is specific, there's also gonna be an opportunity to where, you know, it'll be posted on the sign along to the residence of a, of a 250-foot radius. In addition to, the agenda memo will also be put out, you know, for the planning and zoning. So everything is in sequence, and that agenda report will have the parameters and/or any additional rules, if you wanna say, um, that could trigger something else. But just to be clear, one of the four properties identified triggers at two-thirds.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, is, if it does get turned down, you can still have someone come in and wanna move in there and put a marijuana store into the Steak and Shake. They still go through the process, and it's, it goes back to the four vote. Standing, so it doesn't prevent someone coming back in later. So basically, what we're doing is double jeopardy, we're gonna try for a war first time. Hopefully, by then, we've already got one in another location in Darien, and we only allow for one marijuana store, so hopefully we'll have one before even through all this.
I think, I think what's going to happen, and I'll predict this, I could be wrong, we're gonna go through a process where we're gonna hear a lot of negative endorsement of this from residents.
Right.
You're gonna come to the city council, and you're gonna have a negative vote at the city council, and we will, this site will stay with the same zoning. That's why I had no problem with this going forward, because I think the process needs to play out.
I totally agree. Thank you, Dan.
Anything else? So the motion is passed. It takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature, does anybody have anything for the council? Mary?
Um, just wanna announce that Hinsdale South High School's Booster Club, which is, um, one of the biggest, uh, parent support organizations at the school, is having their 17th annual fundraiser. It's a little bit different this year since a, it's a virtual event called Hornet Showcase. It's taking place on Friday, May 5th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is going to be broadcast on YouTube, you can find out information on how to get onto the showcase by going to the Hinsdale South Booster website at Hinsdale, um, at Hinsdale South Boosters, plural, dot org. Um, it's gonna be a great event, there is also gonna be an auction going on, starting tomorrow at noon through 10:00 p.m. on Friday. And it's just a, a great way to see, um, all the amazing talent, um, at the high school, as well as lots of, um, uh, sneak peeks on some of the, um, improvements that have been made to the building, band and chorus, drama and speech, um, deaf a heart of hearing, uh, athletics, dance, cheer, um, lots of great successes happening at the school right now with the, um, speech team winning, um, third in state, first time ever with several, um, students placing. Um, the dance team is going to state again for the ninth year in a row, the cheer team, um, you know, sports are back, so it's, it's a very exciting time at the high school, even though kids are still not in full time, but, um, you know, it's giving them some normalcy. So please come out and support the high school on Friday night.
Thank you, Mary, anyone else? Nothing else, uh, motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shower moved, and Sullivan second. Motion, uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Goodnight.